We're now called to order in November 16th, 2020, meetings of the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees. Current time, 6:06. Let the minute show of form is present with all members in attendance. Please rise to the invocation given by Ms. Sharp. Remain standing complacent allegiance and honor the Texas flag led by Mr. Mixon.
Heavenly Father, God, I ask you, and thank you for all the candidates that are not here. We're going to ask for wisdom tonight and ask for wisdom in your spirit to encourage the board to make many honorable decisions that are made and conversations that are had. God, I just pray that the things that we do tonight will come to the best interest of the children in order to help New Caney become a standard in our area of how we consider their education and their work. God, thank you so much for God to hear this. It's very precious.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, the Republican Party, Texas, one state under God, one unity, one law.
We're going to skip over Idol 2, and we're going to move into Idol 3. On the agenda is public hearing for Financial Integrity Rating Systems for Texas. Your name is Brandon.
Okay, there are some copies of the report in the back, and then you can sign it, and they'll show you the rating as we grade. This is a 1920 rating, but it's based on 1819 data. This is the 17th year that we have had the first rating. That's what I'm going to use for acronym, but it's Financial Integrity Rating System in Texas. This year, we did receive a Superior Achievement Rating, which is an A. The rating measures the quality of school district's financial management and the reporting system. It ensures that Texas school districts are accountable not only for student learning, but also achieving those results cost-effectively and efficiently. There are some criteria, and that's also in the packet and copy of the actual first rating itself. There's critical indicators. That's 1, 2A, and 2B, 3, 4, and 5. These are centered around unrestricted debt assets, the annual audit report, any auditor findings, debt payments, and payments to other governmental agencies. If you get a no on any of those, then you automatically get a substandard achievement, and you fail. We got a yes on all of those, but indicator number 5 does not need scored in this rating. Indicator number 6 measures days of cash on hand. Each of these indicators worth 10 points. New Caney ISD received 10 points in that section. Indicator number 7 is whether short-term assets cover your short-term liabilities. We received 10 points in that as well. Indicator 8 is school district's assets are greater than its long-term liabilities. In order to show there's long-term solvency, we got 10 points on that one. Indicator number 9 is whether the district spent more than it earned. So basically, did you add the fund balance? We did, so we received 10 points there. Indicator number 10 is the district able to make its debt payments and interest payments. He worked, so we scored 10 points on that. Indicator 11 is the percentage of the district's budget that was spent on administration. We have a low administration ratio, so we got 10 points on that as well. Indicator 12 basically has to do with decline in students. We don't have a decline in students, so we automatically got 10 points on that. Indicator 13 is does your PIM data match your annual audit report, and if the discrepancy is so less than 3%, ours is not, so we got ours matched, so we've got 10 points on that. Indicator 14 is the district's annual audit. Did you have a clean audit? Was there no material weaknesses in internal controls? We had a clean audit. No material weaknesses. We received 10 points on that. Indicator 15, if the state had overpaid you, were you able to pay it back? We did not get an overpaying from the state, so we received 10 points on that. I'm very proud to say this is the first year since we had a number rating that we scored 100 points. So we got a perfect score. In the past, it was a 60 days or 90 days cash on hand. We actually have 106 days cash on hand, so we got all 10 points. So that's proud of that. The next thing we have to do is some disclosures.
I'm sorry? On number 11, where it talks about the administrative cost ratio, the number super agent below, do you know what our administrative account is?
I did not print the detail out, but I can send it to you.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Slash and send it to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so on the disclosures, the superintendent's contract is required to either be made available here or posted on the district's website, and that is posted on the district's website. We have to report any reimbursements received by or paid on behalf of the superintendent and all board members. And those categories are bills, lodging, transportation, fuel and mileage, and other, which is dues. Those are broken down in the report, and you can see them in detail on the report, but I'm just going to give totals. For superintendent Franklin, it was $16,058.7. For Mixon, $2,050. For Arrow, $1,0366. For Cole, $1,0744. Trout, $1,0351. Turner, $1,0520. Warwick, $1,0451. And Sharp, $1,0624. We had two others, Wooten and Moreau, and they went out, so they have zero. We also have to report any outside compensation received by the superintendent for any professional consulting or other services, and that is none. We have to report any gifts received by executive officers or the board members that had an economic value of $250 or more in that aggregate, and we did not report any gifts received. And then any business transactions between the school district and board members. And currently, there are no business transactions between the school district and board members. Any questions from?
So if you can't, why would the numbers be different between each board member?
I'm sorry?
Why would the numbers be different entirely between each board member?
There are some board members that went to some additional trainings or additional events. This is for 1819, so that would be one of the main reasons. Because most of that is for trial and error.
I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Yes.
It looks like the heat is getting more and more.
Any questions for us?
Any other questions? Thank you. Item 4 on the agenda is open forum. We don't want to sign up for that. When I move into item 5, the agenda, which is closed meeting, the board will now meet with closed meeting under authority of Texas Government Code 551.074 for the purpose of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, and Government Code 551.072 for deliberation regarding purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Any action as a result of closed session, discussion will take place after the board reconvenes in open meeting. The time is 6:15. Board, it is closed meeting at 8:40. We'll now swing back around back to item 2. On the agenda, as recognition, if we receive the board, I will reside over the meeting as the elected board president. Another nomination for board president.
I'll tell me first.
I don't know my ex-entire. Okay, so we will start with Craig first. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So the second nominee is Chad Turner. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chad Turner will be elected president for the upcoming year.
What'd you say?
I don't mean, are there nominations for board vice president?
I'm nominated Craig Mixon.
Second.
All those in favor to elect Craig Mixon to be elected board president, say aye.
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 Craig Mixon, New Caney ISD board president.
Vice president.
Vice president, sorry. Are there nominations for board secretary?
I'll nominate Elizabeth Harold.
All that, all the in favor for Elizabeth Harold to be elected secretary, say aye.
Aye.
Elizabeth Harold is board secretary for the upcoming year. Are there nominations for assistant secretary?
I'm nominated Ty Trout.
All those in favor for Ty Trout to be elected assistant secretary, say aye.
Aye.
Ty Trout will be elected assistant secretary for the upcoming year. We're going to move on to six on the agenda towards the, to the end. Amy Sanji, where you at? Sorry, we, we, so now newly affected board members, I mean elected board members, Mrs. Elizabeth Harold and Craig Mixon will now take the oath of office.
I can summarize your review, please. District behind me. How you say your name?
I, Elizabeth Harold.
Do solemn, sir.
Do solemn, sir.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of this office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of this office.
As school board trustee in the state of Texas.
As school board trustee in the state of Texas.
And hold the best of my ability.
And hold the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And all of the United States.
And all of the United States.
And the states of the United States.
And the states of the United States.
Congratulations to Ms. Harold, Mr. Mixon, on the reelection to the board. We're going to move item 6 to the end of the agenda tonight, so we're going to move into item 7. The agenda is going to be superintendent's report. I'll be running with that. So Ms. Schopfer will be presenting our 2020, 2021 course, nine outline. My friend.
I have an office down there. I will do my best impersonation.
Mr. Rutherford will be presenting.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me give you a brief update real quickly about our course guides. They pretty much look the same as we've always had. We cleaned them up a lot. You'll see three major changes. First is we added some, in private, incentivized our students with some different courses we really offered for our seniors aware graduation. Also, we've added the corporate league where our legislation passed, some legislation about trying to make sure that our students can take college courses that will go from college to, from college to college. No matter where they go, they have to accept these classes. And so you'll see that on page 26, and that's what that is, is this, it's a dual credit pathway. It's for our two traditional high schools because, as you know, Infinity already has access to earning an associate's degree. And basically, students will be able to structure their path to benefit them the most, and there's college essentials, the corporate league. And the college essentials is where they can earn 18 hours, which is what we're going to be offering here in New Caney ISD. They can obviously earn more, but they're going to have to do that on their own as well, which is, which they can earn up to 42 hours with a corporate deposit. But there are 18 hours that we are going to be offering for them to be able to earn their college essentials. You'll see that added. Also, we just cleaned up some language, just to align that with our EIC global policy, and those are just the major differences. You'll see. All right. Thank you.
All right, Matt. Talk to us about maybe something. There you go. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Schopfer, your own thanks. I'm sorry. You had a little spread out on me tonight.
Okay, good evening. I wanted to start by saying that I am incredibly proud of the instructional directors, our principals, our basement teachers, and our kids, and our families as we try to maneuver through this pandemic. The only thing we can count on pretty much is that the guidance and the rules from the commissioner change often. And so there's an update from the commissioner on November the 5th, where we can, there are new rules that we can discontinue remote instruction for students who have less than a 70 in any course, or three or more, and excuse absences. And so we feel like that's probably the best situation for our kids, if they're not being successful remotely, to show back at the school. There are some stipulations. They have to have an appeal process in place, and we have to give parents two weeks' notice. So this is something that wouldn't happen until January 5th, but I wanted to let y'all know that that's something that we're going to be working on. Hopefully, the week we can return from Thanksgiving, we'll start notifying parents that this effect is in their system. It's looking like right now about 37% of our remote kids would be back on campus. They either have less than a 70 and one of them works in Port Aragon and excuse absences. So 1,723 kids will return to campus.
Is that what we're going to notify them that they must return?
Yes. If they don't, we can't force them, of course, but we're going to discontinue remote instruction for them. So truancy laws and not equal separation rule would hold for them. If they're not attending, if they're not completing their work, it's a never-ending interest to show back at the school. And so one of the things that we did talk about is looking at our teachers and kind of reallocating resources and determining. We talked about last time, possibly having teachers that were strictly remote and strictly on campus. When we look at that, especially in our high school or middle school, with some of our singles in classes, that's going to be tough to do. But after we look at these numbers, see, you know, how many kids are going to be in class, and how many still have remote, that's something that we'll look at.
So what are the numbers between primary and secondary on the?
The number at elementary? So for elementary, 398 students. Middle school, 497. Both high schools and Infinity, 828. So that's kind of our background. I guess you'll have questions for me?
Thank you. Mr. Cowery, your own?
All right, wanted to give y'all an update on some rezoning that we'll be looking at doing for the upcoming year as we open K for the Bastrop district. That's just one of the growing things that we do have to experience, rezoning our district from time to time to maximize our capacities and our ability to, you know, keep our program to stable, efficient levels. It's just something that we have to do as a growing district. So the brains behind this operation are right here, Nate Murray, Joe Marable. They definitely put the method to the madness with this. There's people on the numbers and the data, so they're integral parts, just for sure. Just want to give you a little heads up on the timeline we'll be talking about. I will dive into this. Tomorrow, we'll meet with campuses that are being impacted by this recommendation. That's going to be New Caney High School, Porter High School, K for Crossing Middle, New Caney Middle, and even out of the elementary. So I'll get with those terms to some point tomorrow. We'll walk through this, just begin answering specific questions they have. Just like we've done with the best, after Thanksgiving break, we will put informational posters at the campuses that are impacted to let those people come in. One of the times still reports, see what's going on. We'll also open up the email, answer some of your questions. We'll give them each phone number so they can call and get specific questions. And then Dr. Power can put a second on our website showing all this information. And currently, we're going to put on the schedule a public meeting at New Caney Middle School on January 12th, and that will be for the sixth graders at New Caney Middle School. So we're going to pencil it in for right now. And then the end of the timeline, beginning January, we bring you guys a recommendation that will rezone our middle and high school zones starting with the 21th school year. So yeah, this is just what we're bringing to you, and trust me, I get the schools we are going to be talking about. It is more than just data and numbers. There's a lot of history and tradition and all that kind of stuff there. Do you think that once you see the data, you see the projections, we have to make decisions based on that, take a little bit of emotion out of it? But don't think that that's something on the table. We realize that we are dealing with a very traditional, historical set of kids right here, campuses, and things like that. So just note that we're just ranking out that. So I want to move that one to right now. These are our two American high schools up, literally the red and blue stuff down. All the red dots on there are our current schools we have in the district. One scenario that basically leaves everything to say is sending New Caney Middle School to New Caney High School. Again, nothing really changes there. The zone does get, that's our high school zone down. So you can see the core zone, it shrinks. New Caney High School zone is bigger. By default, last year, when we talked about Woodbridge Core Zone, again, we don't split via our middle schools, and so the Woodbridge Core Zone is your third high school zone there. This is where it gets interesting. We're going to show you this in traffic in just a second. You see some numbers there? The one I want you to focus on are actually, you know, the two most important, what happened to New Caney Core High School? This is looking, their Dini's crystal ball, but it's pretty accurate. Even during hurricane years, COVID years, she's pretty good at her job. So what that does, a little more easy to look at here, those same numbers on the data, what you've got. The white line at the top is New Caney High School and student population. The, our orange line that's trending down is Core High School. The gray that's trending up and flattening off, that's our high school in retreat. And the flat line at the bottom, that is Infinity Area Balance High School. So just for a frame of reference, I had Nate put your 6A line on there, 5A, Division 1, regular 5A, 4A set up on there. And that, this is not truly extracurricular proven. It's just one of the things the district's always tried to do is we believe in keeping that 5A high school. Speaking of, we've got a lot of opportunities. We go to smaller, we got that community deal. So if you left New Caney Middle School and New Caney High School, New Caney High School is going to get 6A or an L state here based on these projections. The other part of that is, again, as a growing district, space is very limited around here. So the capacity at New Caney High School, we're going to get really tight really quick. That we talked the other night about four rules, and we don't like that word, and we want to, you know, try to deliver the future and all that. It's going to be tough to get New Caney High School up to the growth that's coming under this scenario. So the one that we are going to recommend, I know again, it's, I see what's up there. I want to let the data show you what it says. So I'm going to let the data speak for me on this one. China gets the district third. You've got your top third, your middle third, your bottom third. Top being New Caney High, middle being Core, bottom being New Caney High School. So what that does is it starts bringing those New Caney High School numbers down sooner rather than later. They will come back down. So moving on to this one, you can see, again, if you're projecting, there is a chance New Caney High School could still go 6A. But in this scenario, it comes back down in 5A. These lines with our third high school, the Core High School, and New Caney High School, they all get back within that 5A group. They're more, you know, the numbers are more evenly distributed. Things are just, you know, they're more in line. Program wise, it'd be more beneficial. Capacity wise, it's obviously a better thing. That last scenario, it very much underutilized the Core High School from a capacity issue. We just added that 400 student condition over there. So this New Caney Middle to Core High School, it, it does sound great to say, just from a pure data, student number, capacity standpoint. It's a scenario that we would recommend to you guys. Deanie and Michelle have looked at this multiple different ways. You could probably still have followed with all the spreadsheets and maps and everything she had in her office just going through this. We've been knowing probably for a couple of years that this is the next big move, and so we just try to be thinking of any way possible to make it happen. Moving as soon as possible, and now they're actually making it in here. So what that would look like, as you're current middle school zone right here, dive over here, we're both middle school zones. Again, wood, possibly Kiefer, yellow, New Caney Middle, red is White, and bottom third is Woodbridge. Again, we also built our larger middle schools on the north and the south, Woodbridge and the Kiefer and Facher, 1500. Our two smaller middle schools, New Caney Middle and White, are in the middle, so there is a long-term plan with that. So this is, this is just for today. You know, we've saved the pass up number to now. We're going to keep going. So this may be the scenario right now, but who's to say? New Caney Middle might not build up, New Caney High School, or those Core High Schools, wherever other middle schools are. This map will continue to change. It's just part of the current district. So that's, that's all we've got for you. Leave it, you know, that's, that's probably what I was telling you slide, slide of me. Just some, some ground rules for this. When we start going through this process, as far as talking to the parents, are they going to approve it? All current 7th and 8th graders at New Caney Middle will go to New Caney High School. You know, 7th graders, when they really start getting their regular, all that kind of stuff, then they've already started working with those high school, band director, coaches, all that kind of stuff. So they would go there. The reason we're going to meet with those 6th graders is to explain to them, you know, about changing the quarter. And if you can, dark go come in. It's things like that getting them familiar with where they're going to be on the school. They'll start working on some of those coaches and band director for Core High School. There are some 6th grade students at New Caney Middle who will be resigned to Kiefer. There's approximately 64, I believe, of those kids. It's kind of like we did White Oak and Woodbridge. If they choose to stay at New Caney Middle, they have to provide their transportation. Otherwise, they can go to Kiefer Crossing. Now, for if they go to Kiefer, they're selling that New Caney High for your parents. So those 64 kids took over New Caney High School. Like I said, it's, I realize it's more to that than just the data, the different line of, again, history, tradition, the New Caney Middle, New Caney High connection, all that. And looking at, looking at our data, looking at the number a little bit, Jack. Right now, this would be the scenario that we would recommend from that standpoint. So we will, we will get that process going, and get feedback from our community, get feedback from our parents. Of course, we will get more of that tomorrow with our principals, run that through them. Just wanted to give you all an update of where we stood, how we got there, and how we're going to go. So if you've got questions, I can do my best, and I'll get real specific out.
That's, that's a tough one.
Yes.
Before you came, there was White Oak and Kiefer, right? And then we added Woodbridge, and we changed the 6th grade campus to New Caney Middle. Because Kiefer used to be New Caney Middle. It actually used to be New Caney High School a long time ago. And then 6th grade used to be New Caney Middle, previously New Caney High School. And then New Caney Middle went away for several years, and then it was Kiefer opened with Woodbridge open, then we opened the practice in New Caney Middle. So it's only actually been back for probably, tell them, it's variable.
Yeah, she was a 6th grader from New Caney.
Right, okay.
So we changed the building.
Wheeling.
Yeah, opening, closing, changing, so, yeah. There's corporate the data standpoint, but yeah, it's, it's been moving around a little bit. We're just trying to survive, kind of do what's best for the kids, but we don't want to ignore that community response. We'll get that timeline going, and of course, you can all update throughout that process as we collect feedback. And we'll bring this back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 8 on the agenda is consideration and consent counter, consideration of minutes, consideration of finance report, consideration of purchase report, and consideration of personnel voice. Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the items that have been set? Motion has been moved and seconded. There have been no further discussions. A vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So the motion is approved. Item 9 on the agenda is consideration of approval of CPR 05 in the amount not to exceed $90,000 for trash removal. $90,000 for trash removal, and backfill the northeast corner of property, bond 2018, New Comprehensive High School Number Three, project 008.20-2018. Is that about Mr. Cowherd?
Yes, sir. This change order is so we can get that situation right on the northeast side of that property, we refer to it as, as the hole on that side of the property, had to do a lot of remediation there, we had some buildings, good dirt and bad dirt out, and it's one of the entrances in actually, we had a high school that's very far in our athletic field, so we just need to do some things to get that area right, asking for your also approval.
Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve CPR 05, the amount not to exceed $90,000 for trash removal, and backfill the northeast corner of property, bond 2018, Comprehensive High School Number Three, project 008-2018? Motion has been moved and seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no, the motion is approved. Item 10 on the agenda is consideration of approval of updated policy, EIC local, presented by Ms. Schopfer.
Okay, remember last month, we talked a little bit about EIC, and it wasn't clear, we went back to task made and clarified the language, dual credit courses are only not included in calculation for senior year, because we do full rank for nine weeks, and we don't know what they're going to make in that class yet. And so, if you, I'm sure you saw, that it's specified senior year, and then in the calculation chart, dual credit courses for all other semesters are included in the next classes. Got any questions for me about that?
All right, thank you. Any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the policy, EIC local?
Sorry?
Motion has been moved and seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, the motion is approved. Item 11 on the agenda is consideration and discuss superintendent's resignation, and any and all actions necessary to implement this except. I'll be the presenter on that, so we're basically looking at the resignation of Ken Franklin. Does anybody have any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to accept? No, Beth. Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. I move that we accept the superintendent's resignation effective November 16, 2020, and the terms of the agreement as discussed in closed session.
Motion has been moved and seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, the motion is approved. Item 12 on the agenda is consideration of appointing the intern superintendent, presented by myself, I guess that's what we said, we will, the board is in unanimous decision to appoint Matt Cowherd as our intern superintendent, New Caney ISD, as of 12 o'clock this evening. We feel that this is the best decision for our district, so. Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve Matt Cowherd as intern superintendent?
The way that we named Matt Cowherd as intern superintendent effective immediately.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, motion is approved. Mr. Cowherd, will you please come out of seat with us? Going around back around to finish this up, item six on the agenda, we move to the end, it's going to be reports and proposals of board members. Does anybody have any reports?
Yeah, just want to assure, first off, I want to thank our principal administration sitting here, I want to thank you, that you guys continue to work hard, our kids, about the district. Speaking for, for the rest of us, we want to assure you that we are going to continue to move forward and advance our district, be the top district, the best place to work, so you can be confident in that. So I know, I'm sure there's a lot of questions and things, but feel confident that we're going to continue to move forward.
Anybody else? You know, our board is very, most of you know, have known us for a while, we're very focused on one thing, and one thing only, which is our students, and we're going to continue to do that as we move forward. I appreciate Craig with his words there, and we're going to continue to move forward and make this district better than it was today, so. With there being no further business, meeting is adjourned at 9:08.